Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting this Monday, May 6, 2019, at 7:06 PM. Ms. Derry, would you call it, please?
Yes, David Brown.
Here.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ron Powell, Dixon, Dan McDaniel.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. If you would please rise at this time, we'll have our prayer led by Trent Hampton. We'll count your temp with United Political Church, followed by our pledge by Will Dawson.
Lord, we love you. Thank you for your presence. God, thank you for a great little city like Greenwood. Thank you for wonderful leaders that serve you, God. We're about to get your presence here tonight. We ask that you would lead and guide us, direct us, give us wisdom as we make decisions for our community. God, we ask that you would protect our community, protect our leaders. We ask that you would unite us to do the common good and to do your will, Lord. Ask that you would give us an un- common spirit of unity to be alive with you to the whole world, God. We thank you in advance for the blessings that you continue to pour out upon Greenwood. Ask that your kingdom would come, Lord, there will be done in Greenwood just as it is in heaven, God. We ask this in the mighty, saving name of Jesus.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Seuss. Root pastor, go. Did he escape? Well, there you are. You know what you have to say, right?
Uh, okay, man. I still told you then.
I'm kidding. Thank you for coming, man. I think you... At this time, I would ask the council to take a look at, if you've not already done so, and ask for approval of the minutes for the April 1st council meeting. And there is a corrective amendment to March 4th, 2019, and it's also... I guess we can do this together.
I mean, I believe so.
Yep.
It's on the sheet, and so the corrective amendment to the March minutes, absolutely, it's just a date. It was the same day as the beginning.
Make a motion to approve the amendments with the most changes.
Do you have a motion? I think I heard a second. Motion and a second?
Good. After Brown.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time in our agenda, we have recognitions and acknowledgements. The old doctor, I'm not sure how to say this anymore, state rep doc, Lee Johnson is here with this meeting somewhere, sitting in peanut gallery in very back.
Back as far as I can get.
There you go. See how it is? You come back and sit in the back. Thanks for being here tonight. We have other guests, and we appreciate everybody being here tonight.
Mayor?
Yes.
I wouldn't miss if I didn't recognize you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Senator Pitch, I didn't see you there. Another peanut gallery is in there. All you guys.
He's also in the back.
Yes, he is. I'm sorry I didn't see him back.
All the action here.
All you politicians. Sonny, why are you sitting back there with politicians? I thought you had more sense than that. Thank you for being here. All right. Committee reports, South Sebastian and Boys and Girls Club. I know Mr. Sunday was in earlier today and looked tired from the tournament yesterday. He probably wouldn't be here tonight, so I think you have a written report from him. As always, if you have any questions or thoughts, you can direct those to my office via our brand-new, used to be Tammy, but not Tammy anymore, our brand-new Daniel Smith. Please welcome Daniel Smith to the big leagues, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm sure she will take all the prayers she can get while trying to be my assistant, so Tammy being our new parks director, I'll just jump right into that. So I thank Tammy. Okay. Number two, SRCA Lisa is not here, and I'm serious. So the same thing, if you've got any questions on her report, Parks Commission, I know I saw Mr. Goldstein. Do you have anything for her, sir?
This is why I'm officially introducing your new parks director.
I kind of stole your thunder there, didn't I? Thank you. Water Waste Water Commission, Mr. Bailey, did you have anything to...
Just a couple of quick ones.
Okay.
Couple of projects. Our, we're working on easements and bid documents for the Highway 71 sewer Marlin extensions. Expect bid opening at the City Council meeting for June or July. We expect to have that bid open. And on another project that's underway, our SCADA system, that's system control and data acquisition is what controls our water system, so we don't want to operate 24 hours a day. And that's nearing completion. We've got a few tweaks in it. The system has a lot of tweaks. That's nearing completion. And it should help us a little bit. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. I failed to mention a minute ago during the recognition, I know no one is here tonight necessarily from the band, but I know Greenwood High School marching band just recently marched at Disney World, so that was pretty cool. It's on Facebook. I don't know anything more about it than that. They, I got to watch it. It was really cool, so congratulations to them for that. And I encourage you, if you hear something in town, a group of accomplishments or whatever it is, individual, please let us know, and we'd like to recognize those folks as we move forward. Coach Williams, we're going to bring him in. He's won so many awards in the last month. I'm not sure this is going to mean anything to him, but we're going to bring him in maybe next month and bring him around a little bit. He's nearing his retirement also, so he's not too old to stay at that length. We'll try to get him down here. He's my age, so that's the reason I said that. But anyway, citizen form, I did not get the... Do I have it? This is important. We'd like to put Daniel on the spot for some three days of work, so we'll all just pause for a few minutes while Daniel rings up. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Before I do that, let me introduce to you, just, I just, I didn't know if I should go out quietly or what the occasion was, but we have a new police, Bradley, 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 new, is that a word? Brand-new police officer, combining words this evening, that I just wore in, I think, last week. And this is Daniel Mahan. Please welcome Daniel to... No, go ahead and sit one more time, sir, if you don't mind. Daniel's, get ready. He's formerly from Alamo. Sorry, I hate to make you do that. Yeah, we're excited about you being here, and so thank you for coming and being a part of the greatest PD in the world, right? We have two other officers. I think both of those are still in the cabin. Sir?
Second week.
Second week, yeah, okay. Well, on our citizen form sheet tonight, we have two names that are on here. If you will step forward when I call your name and just come to the, to my, and introduce yourself again. Mr. Ben Thomas is here. And if you'll just tell us who you are and your address for the file.
My name is Ben Thomas. I live in Greenwood, 1041 Norwood, Business and Police Department. I'd like to bring props.
Absolutely.
I asked you for an informal tonight. I just want to know that I am going to come back to you all at the gym meeting. Would you like to meet with the Parks Commission, excuse me, the Water Commission again? A couple of years ago, I was here. We progressed. The Water Commission didn't really have any concerns. I don't know. We've had it back and forth on that, and I've pulled the works off it. But what I want to do is propose the ability to have an option for internet for the city again. I know each of you in your wards, I'm sure you've heard from your citizens who live in there. I'm on Facebook pages. I'm on social media pages, and I see part of that. But more importantly, the city could offer an option, and I want you to think about that to the citizens. It wouldn't cost the city anything. So you can get onto water tanks, equipment is this size. Couple of leaves, a couple of leaves, one of these is one inches. The diameter is bigger. Maybe they have seven sizes on a bar. And you cover 60, 70% of the city as an option by having another, and speeds up to about 50 minutes up to 100 minutes speeds. But more importantly, what the citizens, what the city have is, I want to think in order in terms of sort of, I'll come back to all this. The city can become a smart city very easily if you have free internet service. If you were to look at needing a camera in each neighborhood with a licensed U-PAD camera, and put up a pole, and you don't have to pay for a business account for each pole, you want to budget 800, $1,000 a year for every camera you have, because you have to pay for the local cable company, local phone company to provide that. If that was provided to you for free, could be managed. It could be near Westwood, it could be near, uh, the Deer Trails, all these communities out here. So when those break-ins come in, in one or five a.m., you now have cameras that the police department monitor live 24 hours a day, much like the city of Auburn does today. So just think about those types of things, along with the people just outside the city, along with people in the city for the bank and ask, and I've watched it, the letters in the paper, leaving another option, all right? But I'll come back to you with more formal proposal, just like I did a couple of years ago. We have been very busy in rural areas where there are no options. So we have satisfied 1,000 customers in the outside of rural areas. Remember, when you leave here, you go two miles that way, all the way to Russell Road, your students have no good access. They can use unlimited, they can do online classes, and it's a long way. So you all have an option. You have a good phone company, you have a good cable company, but some of them, they roofed up. They don't have one option, and that's the cable. The other company doesn't do this one. So that's, that's all. So I want to come back to you, but think about that. If there's any concerns or anything, or he knows you, just let him know. I just wanted to see the equipment. It's small. It's not going to make these towers open. And we're on 30-plus water tanks now between Ozark and Charleston and Jamesburg. And I have this handy, it's approved one of the contracts with one of the water companies who are holding water tanks open. So just keep that in mind.
Thanks, sir. Do you get back in June?
Yes, I have water and power concerns, so I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dan Gladden, you are up, sir. I was going to say Don, but it's really not.
It's not, if you like.
Bulldog Man.
My name's Dan Gladden. I live 141 Norwood, and I'm here tonight just to give an update on the Bulldog Breakfast Club. Many of you guys in this room have helped with collections this year. I appreciate it. Just want to let you know kind of where we stand. It looks like that we may have a record year this year in terms of the number of families participating. As of last week, almost 100 families had signed up with 420 people who'd be receiving services through the breakfast club. Unfortunately, donations haven't kept pace with the number of people needing services. And we've been talking amongst ourselves, focus on Greenwood, let's kind of take a leap on this now. We have resources enough to compete with cereal throughout the summer and not milk, so we're not that with collections. The weight staff at the dairy donate all their tips to us, so we've collected from their generosity, $800 in the last couple of weeks, which is wonderful, and that goes a long way. But again, it's going to take about $9,000 to do milk and cereal through the, through the summer, and we currently don't have those resources. And if you guys have some thoughts, if we commit to milk and cereal for the first distribution, we won't have enough money to do cereal all the way through the summer. So if you guys have a thought, I mean, should we do all cereal and make sure everybody has cereal through the summer, or we've been able to do milk and cereal for the first few years. We're currently not in a position to be able to assure that. Thoughts? AC, I mean, you'd have to every weekend. What do you think?
Well, I was just letting you know, has the school been approached, you know, as far as...
The schools, I talked to Susie. The schools, the last month of the year really hard on them because they're doing all their testing. Last year, we got support from about half of the campuses. I don't know, I haven't heard from anyone this year on the campuses. I'm not counting on it. If we hit it, that would be great, but for right now, I'm only counting what's on hand. That's not...
What about donations from milk companies? Have we talked about it?
Yes. Highland is, has committed to another 200 gallons of organic milk, right, Tammy?
Yes.
And Tammy, Tammy's, it's good stuff. It's got a longer shelf life. 200 gallons is good. We give each participant a gallon of milk a month. A distribution period is 27 days. There are 32 servings of milk in a gallon of milk for a bowl of cereal. On, on average, a cereal box will say that serving is either a half cup or 3/4 cup. For an eight-year-old, that's probably great. For a 14-year-old or a 20-year-old or whatever, that's not sufficient. So we promote by 20% what's on the box, and that takes us up to just enough to hold that. 420 people times three distributions is, well, 160 gallons of milk at nearly $4 a gallon. You see, it's a very, 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 so where we are. And we're, we're working on it. We're still collecting. We've got collection boxes around town. Our best bank helps us. They do their, their meal collections, and they give their cereal to us. Last year, they surprised us not just with the cereal donations, but also check. That may happen again, but I don't know. Where we are?
Our yellows was mine from the food bank.
We probably could, my thought is, since CBs and Walmart are the lifeblood for us, if we couldn't go to those stores, we couldn't do any of it. So I want to buy our supplies from them. I want to reinvest the money back then. I mean, I probably get Keeper Sam's too, but I don't want to take Greenwood under his finger. No offense to enforcement, but raising your spending. Anyway, that's the update. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Very worthwhile program. I know my wife is a teacher. She can tell you, as most teachers can, that these kids learn much better when they have a full belly coming in and the same in the summertime. If they're coming off the summer without eating, they don't do well for the first month or so at school. It's a good program. Thank you for that update. Agenda additions. I asked the, the department heads, and I won't make a big deal, but I want to. We didn't have any today. I'm assuming we still don't, so there may be others. Yes, sir.
Yes, I want to discuss a resolution or a, or Greenwood flowers and gifts for, you know, purchase of Christmas decorations.
Number seven. Okay. Any other additions? Okay. Old business, planning apartments, code for, or planning coenforcement resolution, condemning structure at 10 Town Square. I think Mr. Mayby has developed a combination.
Number one, two, my understanding is taking care of themselves, and we just have it on Coker Street. And I think this was our package two or three months ago, but it wasn't packed this time. But we have to force a resolution declaring the property of 1100 South Coker to be out of compliance with our citizens' ordinance and directing the owner to abate the commission within 30 days, and that if it is not abated within 30 days, that the city may proceed to take, undertake the abatement on their own, and by understanding that the property is on the... I think we've had to do some cleanup out there previously. I think she's...
She will not pick up her certified letter or telephone or anything like that.
I think she's in pretty bad health condition.
I don't know.
Anyway, I think Sonny is requesting a resolution authorizing us to postpone that on the property for 30 days. And if not completed, then we'll be back next month. We're correcting to proceed to...
And this is only on...
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution by title of...
The motion is second to pass the resolution by title of... It is a resolution. Who said that?
I did. Every time I don't say it, then she's like...
Well, see, that just proves whatever you say, I'm going to repeat it, so we're both in trouble.
Brown.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
How did the others resolve theirselves, particularly the one in the square?
The one in the square was purchased by an investment company out of Texas, and they posted on the door for, given the previous owner, 30 days remove anything on the inside, and they're going to remove it themselves. So that's, that's the process right now. Watching it, if nothing moves on it, then it might become time to get Mike in touch with their attorney and have the good attorneys talk and find out a little bit more about it. But they seem to be very interested in getting that resolved and bringing the building up to the standards they'll take and sell it. They're not in the business for owning or renting. They want to sell it.
Are you going to fix it and sell it, or just sell it?
You know, I told them the favor, they had to fee brought back up to code because there, it was not, you know, it was, the roof was bad and things like that, and so, you know, they might be able to sell it with the idea that the person who buys it, you know, prepares it, or they might prepare it to sell. I don't know at this point.
The good news is...
We're going to have to take care of that. I mean, we're going to have to do, uh... But again, you know, that's another thing that, you know, if we take those on and we clean them up, but there's no way to recoup our money on it unless we file a lien, and then when the property sells, they dismiss the liens, and so, you know, it's, uh, you run around in circles, but it needs to be taken care of because it's nicer.
Sonny, there's another house on Coker Street, right next to this one that we're talking about. It's in the same condition.
Next to Sherwood. Well, next to it is the...
Between me and the cowboy chairs on Coker Street.
Okay. I'll check that out. Is it, somebody living there?
Yes. It's gutted.
Okay.
With the windows in it. It's been gutted for a year.
I haven't seen it, or I haven't had a complaint on it, so I will check it out tomorrow.
It's directly behind this house. God, this will...
Yeah, I think you and the cowboy chairs.
Yeah.
Across that street, yes, now. All right.
Thank you, sir. Just like that, we're on number four. New business financing apartment resolution to amend budget for a police retirement.
I'll go ahead. In your packet, you'll see a resolution. What basically we're asking for is, there's an unbudgeted amount that the office came back to us with as a result of a revision to the military leave wage that was adopted this year. They went back and recalculated. One of our officers, Bradley Hobbs, he was on the military leave. They did an audit on the account, found out that there's some additional monies that we owe as a result of military repay. They billed us at the last billing $6,796, and then there's one additional that's coming in. We believe on the next bill that they had some question about the service dates. That's not reflected in this one, so we're asking for an increase in the police bolter and benefits off the budget to go up $7,500, coming from general fund checking. We realized that right now, police benefits to Lockheed was budgeted at $161,000. So that's going to put it about just around here, $170,000, just on the police side. We didn't have any knowledge of this prior to when we got this bill, so it's going to throw you a little bit.
Was this a deal where we paid a military pay and just never took it out, or...
There was a rule, a revision change in the rule, and I think even Stewart showed me the flyer that came after that, that there was a change in the, in the reg, and they went back and they looked at, during the period of time that was encompassed by the revision, they looked at who in cities fell under military leave, and they didn't collect, and they didn't bill for. So he was one of them. I think there's one other one.
Okay, so it's not just one person?
No, that's two individuals. There is one individual. This is a one-time catch-up.
I can both pass the resolution.
Second. The motion is second to pass the resolution.
I'll over one. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mahan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Number five, is agreeing with traffic relief discussion. I know we've been talking about this subject for quite some time. I know, I'm not popular around the state, but I've known around the state. Every time somebody sees me, especially the two gentlemen back there in back corner, know that if I'm in public meetings or more, I'm going to bring up this issue. And I did it recently at a much larger meeting, but I think I turned that meeting into our meeting, didn't I, Senator? I-49 meeting about bigger problems and bigger money, bigger issues. And I was able to bring up this issue to, this was a good meeting. It was, we had four, I believe, of the six commissioners, State Highway Commissioners and Park Smith. I was able to attend with several other mayors and judges and folks, and Senator Pitch got that meeting together. Appreciate that, and was able to discuss this topic with them, and they kind of told me the same thing. I've been told by Mr. Bennett and several other people. I believe the term of that meeting was, we need your chips on the table. What do you have to offer towards something like this? And in other words, they want to know how much money we have or we can have. And I ran, when I first ran for mayor, I was running, this was kind of part of my platform, if you will, let's try to do something about traffic relief in Greenwood. And so, five and a half years into that, I think it's time we get a little bit more serious, and we can talk about it for 20 or 30 years and never get anything done, but until we are able to present something to the citizens for them to decide, because ultimately it's their choice whether we do anything with this or not. I think it's important that we start talking about clear amounts of money and timeframe and things like that. So Mr. Marsh entertains my request quite often when I come to him and say, what, help me find $6 million? He scratches his head, and we look at some things. And so, one thing I handed out to you a little while ago, a minute ago, was a letter that Ms. Reese Brewer, the questioner on some planning development district, kind of helped formulate, this is just a draft of a letter that I'm kind of considering a shot across the bow, if you will, at Mr. Bennett's office to say, hey, here's what we think we could come up with, with some possibilities of other options. What does this get for us? And so, as the commissioners reminded me at that meeting in Fort Smith recently, you know, you could come up with $5 million, which is 20% of the project, and it wouldn't necessarily get started tomorrow, but we get it moving up the list. I mean, we could set up, we have a job number. We are on the list. We have a real job number on it because they did the traffic study, and it's, we're good enough on the traffic study to not begin the environmental study because there's money that needs to be in that. So I've asked several questions. One is if we, the city offered to pay for the environmental study, if that gets going, and it's more, I think more about what we can come up with as a whole. And so, the 20% number is something that Senator Pitch has helped nail down a little bit for us. Seems to be not a magical number, but certainly something that'd get serious for us. So in order to have 20%, I'm going to turn it over to Tom, let him explain a couple of options, if we would, that we would eventually go to the citizens. We're not making a decision tonight. I just want to get you a couple of these options out here and in public, and see if everybody's mind thinking this way, then eventually, somebody asked me today, a department meeting, when we move on this, and in my opinion, I think it would be important that we could go possibly in 2020 to the citizens. We have nailed down to two options. What you want to do, citizens, and here are the options, and let them vote on it, whether we, depending on the size of bond and that sort of thing. Let me remind you quick, real quick, before Tom starts, is one of the things the Highway Department brought back to us once we gave them our idea and our options, we went to Little Rock, speak to Mr. Bennett a couple of years ago now, I think, Senator, and took Dr. Burgess, the property owner, and took Mr. Daniel Wong, and several of us went down and talked to him. He told us there were three things you needed, although he named one of them four times. He said money's good, and he said money about four times. But money's one. Two is the property. You already have your easements or your right-of-ways, or you own the property. Well, we had the property owner with us, so that was obviously in the works. And three is that you're able to turn over a section of highway, or I'm sorry, the RDOTs able to turn over a section of highway to a municipality. And in our case, would be 10 spur all the way from 96 all the way to 71 and become a city street. Obviously, along with that becomes maintenance. No one knows that more now than Dennis, that that would be part of our trade-off a little bit to take it off the RDOTs maintenance from now on. to take it off the RDOT's maintenance from now on. So those are the three, three things that we have lined up. We don't know about the money yet. We have, I'll let Tom take over about the money part of it, if you would, sir.
Yeah, I tell him the bad news. I tell him the bad news, and he says, "I'm not saying that." I'm going to make you say it.
Yeah, exactly.
Right now, with the city sales and use tax that we're...